Oops.
Let's see.
Hi, everyone in the in the chambers. Not sure if you intend for us to see you yet, but we don't see you. We can hear you, though.
I think we're still working on getting some technical stuff lined up, but thank you for letting us know.
Thank you. I'm just trying to start video. Sorry, it's being super sensitive. It's not letting. On our inaugural meeting.
Now I think they can see you.
Are we visible?
You sure are.
Yes, you sure are. Looks great. Hi, everybody.
All right. In that case, I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. And I think we have some rules and so on that will be read off from the top. Is that?
Yes, I'm happy to read them this evening. So welcome, everybody. Just want to read some rules of decorum for this evening's meeting. The city has engaged with community members to co-create a vision for productive, meaningful, and inclusive civic conversations. This vision supports physical and emotional safety for community members, staff, and boards and commission members, as well as democracy for people of all ages, identities, lived experiences, and political perspectives. For more about this vision and the community engagement processes, you can visit our website. The following are examples of rules of decorum found in the Boulder Revised Code and other guidelines that support this vision. These will be upheld during this meeting. All remarks and testimony shall be limited to matters related to city business. No participant shall make threats or use other forms of intimidation against any person. Obscenity, racial epithets, and other speech and behavior that disrupts or otherwise impedes the ability to conduct the meeting are prohibited. Participants are required to identify themselves using the name they are commonly known by, and individuals must display their whole name before being allowed to speak online. Currently, oh, that I'm sorry, that is not accurate on the screen. You are permitted to speak here in person and online today. If you're joining us online, we're in the Zoom webinar format. So when it is time for for public participation or the public hearing portion of this meeting, you may use the raise hand function. And when it's your turn, the host will adjust your setting and you'll see the option to unmute. If you're joining us on the phone, you can press star nine. This is just another graphic for you to show you that you can use that raise hand function. And currently, for this evening's meeting, we'll be doing in-person public testimony and then taking everybody everybody's comments from online. That's it. Back to you, Chair.
Great, thank you. We do not have any minutes to approve tonight, so next up will be public participation. So this is for folks first who are in the room and then anyone online. I also wanted to just make sure everyone knows that this is not for our public hearing item. So this is your opportunity to speak to anything other than the public hearing item. There will be an opportunity to speak to the site and use review extension application, which is at Spine Road. The opportunity to speak to that will be later in the meeting. So if anyone present would like to speak, we'll take you first. And if not, we will move to anyone who wishes to participate in public participation online. And it looks like no one present is speaking, so anyone online?
Yeah, Lynn Siegel.
Lynn, please go ahead. You have three minutes.
There's a couple of hands. So first we'll start with Lynn. Go ahead, Lynn. You have three minutes.
Yeah. I just have to get someone where they I can be quiet because I'm at a talk on the Kitty Hawk. The issue here is, you know, the planning board needs to meet jobs housing balance. That's what they need to do first and foremost. And if that's not in the BVCP, then it needs to be. And this back and forth about densifying more with ADUs and with triplexes and duplexes and micro units, you know, micro units are expensive. I'm sorry, they're expensive, whether they're affordable housing with Lytech funds from the federal government that's pushing population growth like heroin or whether they're just average housing embellishments that are unpaid for with impact fees, appropriate impact fees for the developer. You know what? I'm not voting for the open space for the first time in my life. And I've been here since, you know, seventy, I mean, eighty-seven, okay? And I was here in fifty-eight to sixty-two, but I couldn't vote then. But you know why I'm not voting for open space? Because the developers are pushing this kind of growth that is not sustainable, that is costing me piles of money in maintenance and operations and purchase price of more and more open space to accommodate CU South, which is an abomination and all of the growth that's going on in this community that is unabated and is encouraged by the planning board with subsidies handed out like bills all over the place. This just can't continue. It's not sustainable. It's not fair for people that need housing. It's not fair for the homeless. It's not fair for low-income housing. It's not fair for anyone when we depend so much on these government funds and we aren't balancing jobs housing. So that's the problem. So please do the right thing and grow within your bounds. I don't know that I don't have any timer up, so I don't know where I'm at, which is unfortunate or inappropriate.
You have you have twenty seconds, Lynn.
Okay, so do that. Jobs, housing balance. People can't afford to be wasting their precious time commuting, driving their kids around, et cetera, and driving to remote places where they can afford to live. With all the growth that comes on, it's always more unaffordable. People that have to live here to support this community, do the right thing.
Please wrap it up, Lynn.
Yeah, do the right thing. Use your consciences.
Okay, Chair, there are no other hands online raised at this moment.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Lynn. Next item we have is a call-up item. So this is an amendment to the Boulder Auto Annex P-88-20, P-83-23 for renovations to the Hotel Boulder Auto Annex one and two buildings. This includes creation of fifty new guest rooms and suites in the area of the current first floor conference center and commercial kitchen and so on. I'm not going to read the whole thing. This is in front of us tonight because the call-up period expires November fourteenth, 2023. Fellow members of the board, do you have any questions for staff and/or desire to call this up? Yes, Emma.
Thank you. I have a question. Well, gosh, it might. So this project went before DAB, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And do you know if the recommendations from DAB were met?
Yes, there is some information in the staff memo and kind of a summary of what the DAB comments were, how the applicant responded, and how staff evaluated the project against the downtown urban design guidelines.
Just wanted to confirm that. Thank you so much.
Yes. And then Kurt, please go ahead.
Yeah, I had a few detailed questions about the proposal. First of all, it looked to me like they were saying that they were going to provide six additional bike parking racks, so twelve spaces on the north side. But I in the plans, I only saw four marked. Do you know the situation with those?
Yes, I'm certain I did count them. I could try to find the sheet number and try to find that for you.
If you counted them, then that's good enough. Trust me. The next thing is about the pavement on the west side where the current entry is that's being taken down. Are they going to be? So there's a bunch of stamped colored pavement there currently. Is that going to be replaced?
Yes, part of this proposal is actually to increase some landscaping on on that edge of the property. So right now there's that colored paved kind of area. It is on the private property. So since that'll be being changed, no longer being an entrance there, they have proposed actually add more landscaping in that area.
And so all of that will so currently there's a red section of concrete, basically, that will become that that whole section will be replaced.
I don't recall if that whole section will be replaced. I can definitely just try to look that up real quick for you or or follow up with an email on on the exact sheet and a comparison of that if you'd like.
Okay, I just I it wasn't clear to me that that existing concrete was because of the scoring, the longitudinal scoring. It wasn't clear to me that that was really consistent with the DCS. And so I don't know if that would be required to be replaced and so on. So.
Okay.
Yeah, maybe maybe a follow-up would be great. The last question is about the ecopasses. So only part of the building is encaged, right? But all of the employees will get will be getting ecopasses through caged.
Yes, the the building is kind of unique and then it's partially encaged, which is what we use for parking calculations. But the entirety of the building is also in the the business improvement district, so they are eligible and can provide ecopasses to all the employees.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Kurt. And then Laura.
Thank you. So I had a question about in the packet. It talks about there are some areas of the building where they're building privacy walls that are taller than would normally be allowed, but they're being kind of grandfathered because there are existing walls that are that tall. Do you have a visual for us? Can you show us where that is in the packet or in the diagrams?
Yes, yeah, that that area is on the south side of the building. So where there are, there's an existing trash enclosure and kind of a walk-in cooler along the alley, basically. And there's twelve-foot walls. So I believe it's on page fifty-seven of the packet. There's a comparison of the existing elevation, what would be removed with those trash enclosures and so forth that are no longer needed. And then they're proposing to just have ten-foot brick around some patios that they would be adding for some of the hotel rooms on that back alley.
So the walls are currently twelve feet. They want to have them be ten feet. And what would otherwise be allowed?
Seven feet.
Seven feet. Okay. I'm not going to call it up tonight, but I do want to make a field trip out there and look specifically at that area. And it looks like our call-up period goes till the fourteenth.
Yes, yes. So I'm happy to answer any any additional questions, or I can definitely respond to some of these ones via email. So you have all the information before that. I'm sorry, I didn't say my name. I'm Shannon Muller, the case manager.
Thank you, Shannon.
Any further questions from planning board? Yes, Mark.
I'll just wanted to comment that I was the I was on I was the Planning Board Design Advisory Board representative when DAB reviewed this particular project. DAB's whole focus was on the north entrance with the columns, types of matching the awnings and making the awnings more uniform. And I think, as I recall, overall, the street facing the north, the north elevation on Spruce, DAB's input was to, you know, make it more like the rest of the building. And they they pretty much accommodated all of that. So anyway, it was not a it was not a a deep DAB meeting. It was, yeah, anyway.
Thank you. That was very useful. Yes, please.
So I'll just say I'm also not planning to call this up, but I was disappointed that in the effects on the pedestrian environment, basically, along Broadway. It feels like by removing that entryway, it makes for kind of a plain a plain business front, a building front. And so I, in the end, I decided that it was still. I couldn't say it was not consistent with the site review criteria, but I found it a little disappointing.
Any further? Oh, yeah, please, Emma.
Since we're delving into design, I am actually quite delighted that that canopyed, that dark canopy. I sit at that bus stop right there next to it often. And it's kind of foreboding, you know, the big canopy, nobody goes in and out that door. So I really think that this is a better public face and use. Well, they that's why they're doing it, right? Because nobody was using or it wasn't the need for what they what was being offered down there. So I think it's a great. It's a great upgrade, and I do think that the pedestrian experience around there will be will be much improved. So thank you, folks, for upgrading the Boulder Auto in that regard, because, yeah, that was not a very pleasant place to be hanging out. So thank you.
All right. Anything further from anyone desire to call up at this time? All right. Thank you, Shannon. All right, our next item is our public hearing item. So this is a request to extend the approval of site and use review application number LUR twenty twenty dash zero 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 six three. This has developed the nine point eight seven acre site located at forty-seven seventy-five, forty-seven twenty-five, and forty-six forty-nine Spine Road with two hundred and thirty attached residential units, a cafe, library, art space, and community areas, as well as a mobility mobility hub and green space. So the way this is going to go for folks in the room and listening in is that we're, I believe, going to have a staff presentation. We'll ask questions of staff. There will be a presentation from the applicant, questions for them. And then there will be the opportunity for public participation. So just so that you know when that will be coming forward, and you'll have the opportunity to speak if you wish to. We'll also be kind of looking to see how many folks we have speaking to it, both here and online. I'll be looking for staff to help me with that. If it looks like we're going to have over fifteen people, everybody will have two minutes. If it's less than fifteen, you'll each have three. And that's just to keep these Tuesday night meetings from going until midnight or one AM. And yeah, I think we'll now hand it over to staff for the presentation. Thank you.
Evening, planning board members. Can everyone hear me? This is good. Tonight I'll be presenting a request for a development approval extension for residential development at four seven seven five Spine Road. The role of planning board at this hearing is to determine whether the proposal meets the criteria for an additional three-year extension for the approved site and use review applications. The code requires approval from planning board to proceed with the extension. The proposed development is located in Gun Barrel on the west side of Spine Road, south of Gun Barrel Avenue, and has been part of the Celestial Seasonings property for several decades. The proposed mixed-use development will develop three vacant parcels near Diagonal Highway. The site and use review were approved in June of twenty twenty-one for two hundred and thirty residential units, sixty-five of which will be permanently affordable. Included in the development are amenities such as a library annex, cafe, art space, pool, and community space. The only requested modifications to land use code were for two setbacks, and the site provides three hundred and nineteen parking spaces where three hundred and fourteen are required. The approved buildings are designed to create variation in building mass and scale, including varying building heights and roof styles to match with the surrounding context. The process started in twenty twenty for a concept plan that went to planning board in May of that year. The site and use review was then approved following a public hearing in June of twenty twenty-one. Since then, the applicants have applied for and been granted approval for preliminary plat and various tech docs. The applicant has requested and been granted two staff-level extensions, which brings us to the public hearing tonight for the additional extension. The typical expiration of a development approval is three years. And per section nine two twelve A, an applicant must begin and substantially complete a project within three years from approval. The code provides extension criteria to allow staff to issue two administrative extensions each lasting six months. After that, any further extension must be approved by planning board. The applicant processed their allotted administrative staff level extensions as outlined in the packet. There are three criteria to approve an extension. One, that the applicant demonstrates reasonable diligence. Two, that there is good cause for delays. And three, that there may be any additional conditions imposed if there have been any relevant amendments to Title Nine since the approval. In this case, staff found the applicant exercised reasonable diligence in fulfilling a number of conditions of approval, including several tech doc applications. Further, the applicant has experienced delays due to the timing of the construction, supply chain delays, and increased interest rates during the COVID-nineteen pandemic and delays associated with the emergency. Staff finds that criteria A and B have been satisfied. Since the original application was approved, amendments to the site review criteria have been approved. There have been no changes to the use review criteria. Overall, the intent of the site review process remains the same, and staff finds that the project will remain consistent with the criteria. Because the code is silent about the timeframe extension, staff has interpreted the three-year rule to apply to extensions, although it depends on the level of finalization necessary. The start of the extension would be the date of the decision on the extension from the planning board. And it's important to note that the applicant must abide by the original conditions as set forth in the dispo. The requirements for public notice were fulfilled. A signposting was posted on the property and letters were mailed to neighbors within six hundred feet. Staff did receive comments from neighbors and that were included in the packet. And the most of the comments were not directly related to the criteria for the extension. And that's staff recommends the motion provided here on the slide. I'll open up for questions.
Great, thank you, members of the board. Any questions for staff? Yes, go ahead, Kurt.
I have a question about the the extension code in nine two twelve B two, which it doesn't actually say, as I read it, whether A, the the A and B or A or B are required, but your interpretation is that it's A and B. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. And in the language preceding capital A and capital B, it does have an and in there.
I missed that.
Yeah, it's it's set up a little bit differently in that code section than most of other our other code sections.
Thank you.
Any further questions for staff? Emma?
Thank you. I have I can you guys hear me? I have two questions. So if I understood you correctly, you were saying that the extension would be three years starting today or when planning board approves, is that correct? And that is different from what the applicant asked for, is that correct? When I found they were counting it from the already granted extensions, an additional three years, so they were going into two thousand and twenty-five. No, anyway, it was a different number, but we're talking about it the way you were you the staff proposed. That's correct. Secondly, so I understand that two of the things that are significant things that remain, one is the subdivision approval, and one is the building permit review, is that?
Sorry, I'm just pulling up the, yeah, so the the building permits are not issued yet. And so they've gone through the preliminary plat, but not yet the final plat process.
So in staff's mind, this three-year extension would give adequate time to meet. We see Charles saying yes, to meet, get those approvals and everything in place and begin the construction and have it be substantially completed for the requirement.
That's correct.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Emma. Other questions? Yes, Mark.
So remind me of the changes that we made, I believe, earlier this year or last year to the extension process. Didn't we, planning board, you come to us and request changes to the extension process? Is that right?
I think that was related to specifically the use review approvals that were about to expire. We are likely going to bring you some code changes around this. I would think next year, because we're about to see a lot more of these extension requests for the reasons that I think this applicant is here for tonight, but the changes, Mark, that you were thinking of were related to use.
Use review, not site review. Thank you. Okay, that clarifies that for me. I'm pretty sure I know the answer to this, but staff, the city, does not have a role in determining an applicant's financial viability, changes in circumstance. That's that's not our purview. We have no role in that. Is that correct?
As far as site review goes, as far as these criteria are concerned, and Hella, you might want to help me out with this one. I think that there is some language in the criteria that talk about.
Economic cycles and market conditions.
Market conditions. So that's criterion B, on criteria for demonstrating good cause. But ordinarily, when we're considering a site review application, the land use economics or the, you know, the development, real estate development finance piece of it aren't generally things that we can consider.
Right. Okay, thank you. And the only we received just a little bit of public input, some of it related to fencing the site in prepar in site preparation. Do we have any role in any mitigation that might be associated with a site where that's been, you know, you start scraping a site and you scrape the vegetation, scrape the vegetation, put up a fence, and then you have a year or two pause. Really not a great thing for anyone, particularly neighbors. So can we can we do anything to temporarily mitigate those sorts of concerns for the neighbors? If the site, if we grant a three-year extension, we could have another eighteen months of documentation, permit review, et cetera, financing. So is there anything we can do to do any mitigation for the neighbors for the short term?
Not under this process. It's a quasi judicial process, and you are bound to make your decision based on the criteria in the code just relating to whether or not the criteria for an extension have been met.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mark. And then maybe I'll just give Charles a moment. I know you're just kind of looking ahead to the fact that we may be seeing more of these coming up and possibly a code change. Could you just speak briefly to why we think a lot more of these might show up? I think you touched on it for this one, but I just liked it.
I think we have approvals that are about the same vintage. And I think we're we're finding that teams, development teams are running into similar options. So I think in my time, I'm seeing more administrative extensions. You get the two six-month extensions. I'm seeing more and more of those come across my desk than I've ever seen. So just in anticipation of the fact that I think financing and interest rates, I think the labor market and then also materials, I think there's still a struggle there.
Great. Yep. And I think a lot of that, hard to tease out what's what, but certainly some of it caused by the pandemic, and that was unprecedented. So, well, since Spanish flu. Okay, great. I think next the applicant, unless there are any further questions from board. Okay, I think next we have the applicant's presentation, and then we'll, if desired, and then we'll have questions for the applicant.
Good evening. Matthew Shildt, fifty thirty-seven West Thirty-Fourth Avenue in Denver. I'm here representing the applicant, Sarah Sfregius Group Residential. And I'm going to introduce Pete Weber here, who's the architect on the project.
Hey, Pete Weber. I'm with Coburn. We're the designers and project architects and planners. And I'm just want to go through a couple of things tonight. I'll be relatively brief. First, I just want to remind you of the project if you have not seen it. And then I'm going to go into kind of what we've been up to in addition to some of the things that Allison mentioned we've been up to in the last three years. And then just show you a timeline. We do have we do have a question about the timeline that we're going to want to talk about. We were under a different impression about the extension dates. But let's go through this, and then we can address that. So the the site, as Allison pointed out, is out near Celestial Seasonings on Spine Road. It's about a ten-acre site. Our design includes about forty percent of that overall site is actually open space. We have two hundred and thirty total units, sixty-five of which are affordable. There is a diversity of There is a diversity of how, of unit types in there. We have townhomes. We have one bedrooms, two bedrooms, and three bedroom units. Project also includes community library, some art space and a cafe, so a little bit of, a little bit of mixed use in there. And then some of the improvements that we're making to transportation, there's a buffer bike lane that we're going to be putting in along Spine Road. And then there's a cool little mobility hub as part of the project off the main green that serves a variety of alternative, alternative mode options. The site plan, I think Allison showed that briefly, but it was really designed around the central green space. You can see the large green slightly to the left there. That's the main gathering space in the project, and then off of that is two other little green spaces that move laterally in the north-south direction. And then there's another green space on the far south side of the project, which is to the right of the screen, which is really serves as a buffer between our project and our neighbors, really to the south. The buildings, buildings are relatively small. There's twenty total buildings on this site. And the other thing that the project does is it helps complete Spine Road by building the other side of the street. Central green is the central part of the project, as I mentioned, and you can see how the buildings face that green. The mobility hub is a small building you see down on the lower right. That would be a building that would house all these infrastructurally related to alt modes. The architecture is a, we have mostly pitched roofs. There are a couple of flat roof sections that that tend to note either entrances or some of the mixed-use aspects of the project. This is a long spine road and sleep, the corner of Spine Road in the sleepy time. These are some of the townhome buildings as viewed from across, across that green. So I want to just mention a few other things in addition to some of the things that Allison mentioned about what we've been up to the last years. We got our approval in two thousand and twenty-one. We submitted our tech docs for four out of the five texts. Plat was submitted, and market conditions really started to change. In particular, a dramatic increase in interest rates. Twenty twenty-two, we were very busy. The onsite affordable agreement was drafted and submitted and resubmitted to town, the city, rather. Tech docs were approved for the master in those three other texts. Subdivision was drafted and resubmitted. The prairie dogs were relocated. On the affordable side, they submitted to CHAFA and were awarded a four percent low-income housing tax credits, as well as some private activity bonds, and in addition, received six hundred thousand dollars in grants from the city for the affordable component. Market conditions continued to move in the negative direction for us. Inflation rates became the highest rates in decades. Construction costs continued to increase despite inflation. And as a result, multifamily loan originations have really dropped dramatically. So you can see the, it's having an effect. These things are having an effect on the lending world. In two thousand and twenty-three, this year, the subdivision and plat have been finalized. Financial guarantee has been submitted. Construction documents for the buildings, we're at eighty-five percent. We're ready to submit for permits. So SRG has contracted us to get those ready to go. They are ready to go. Agreements have been achieved for the affordable covenants, and we have received the two requests for the staff level extensions. Some funding, additional funding has been applied to the state for the affordable component. And loner, despite the little bit of improvements in the markets, loan originations are continuing to drop. Let's jump to two thousand and twenty-four. Two thousand and twenty-four, we hope to get our building permits and start construction. That is our hope. That that funding for, that's needed for the affordable is complete, and that lending conditions improve and construction costs improve enough for us to begin building the project. So the timeline, I want to point out, I think this graphic is a good one on the next slide to to show where we are and where we would like to be. You could forward, there you go. Here's where we are. Our current two extensions get us to two thousand and twenty-five. Probably the soonest we'd be able to construct, start construction based on where we are today is going to be second quarter of two thousand and twenty-four. Building permits alone, even if we could submit today, are going to take us up to that time to start to get our building permits. We have twenty buildings that need to go through that, that permit process in addition to the site work. So the construction phase and the time you put a shovel in the ground to the time we are substantially complete is very, well, I don't want to say impossible, almost anything is possible, but we're not going to be able to make the end of our expiration with our approvals on the site review. And lenders don't like this. They don't like seeing that. They read every little bit of code, and they know that we've got an expiration coming here, and they want to see that extended before they land on the project. That's really fundamentally why we're here tonight. We go to the next one. This is where we would like to be. We're hopeful that the extension would get us enough time to finish the project, get it started and finish it. We probably should talk about the extent of the extension. We were under the impression the extension would take us three years from our previous two extensions, not from tonight. So we should try to make sure we're on the same page there, because that's actually quite different. If we're able to get the extension, we're able to get the project done in time. It also allows for further hiccups to happen along the way. Building permits can take a long time. We've had some that take an extraordinarily long over the, over the course of our surveils with COVID, and any other little hiccups that could happen. This would allow us a cushion to not have to come back here and do this, try to do this again. So that's our ask. We're looking for more time to get this project completed. We believe in the project. Very excited about the project. We just need a little bit of help to get it across the social.
Thank you. I'm wondering if it might be most appropriate to talk about the different understandings of the extension and what code requires first, and then perhaps we could ask questions of the applicant.
Yeah, it's a, it's a good question. When the extension period began and the length of it, and the the extension text doesn't actually expressly address it. And the way it's been interpreted in the past is to default back to the general three-year rule. With the original approval, there was an approval for three years starting from the final approval date. So the way it's been interpreted and applied is to replicate that. So if an extension is granted, it also counts from the time of approval and for three years.
So let me just make sure I understand. Could you, the way we've historically understood it as a city, it would, would the clock be a new three years from tonight? Yes, yes. Okay. And your understanding was that it would be from the end of, what, twenty twenty-five?
From the end date of our previous two extensions.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, which I'm sure was part of your process in deciding to come for us currently.
And if it's different, I think we need to have a sidebar.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm just wondering if you, I want to, yeah, I, I might need some staff advisement, but I'm wondering if they're going to perhaps be choosing to withdraw this or like what, what the process is. I know this has been noticed. We've got members of the public here who want to speak. What, can the applicant choose to proceed, not proceed? What, who gets to decide what?
Seems to me there would be no harm to, to get a shorter approval if, if that's all that you can get. Another option is to seek an amendment of the approval and approve a phasing plan for the project, just as it could have been done originally.
I think the previous two extensions that we got, which were at staff level, were on top of the end, from the end date of our previous approvals, and they stacked on top of each other. So that's what led us to the impression that this would be the same thing, tacked on to the end of our extension would be another extension. So again, I, and I also heard two things there. I heard tonight, and I heard from the date of our original, the three-year anniversary of our approval. Those are two different things.
Three years from approval tonight.
Charlie Smith is attorney working on the project. He might have some observations for us.
Hi, Hella. Hello. I'm Charlie Smith. I'm an attorney at Brownstein. We work on this project since we were here the last time. Although some different faces. Yeah, so the, the way we have interpreted the code and what we thought we were applying for this whole time. And this has been a month-long process to get here. Obviously, there were two administrative extensions of six months each. You go through each of those processes. Those were, those were months in the making. And then after that, we've spent an additional few months working with city staff with, with these dates in mind, including in our letter from August requesting the extension to two thousand and twenty-eight. And what we think is the logical interpretation of the code is if you get, if there's a deadline and you get two six-months extensions of the, of those, of that deadline. So now you have, that deadline is pushed out a year, and you're asking for an extension of that deadline, it would be to extend it from that date that has been extended for a three-year period. That's how we came up with the two thousand and twenty-eight extension. And, and beyond it being just what we think is the right interpretation, it's also what's necessary for the financing of the project. But the harm in having a shorter extension is it would fall somewhere in that sort of blue construction window, and lenders, that's going to make any lender nervous, right? Very nervous to the point where they may not lend on the project. They don't want to make a loan to fund a project that we may not be completed by the deadline to complete it, and then have potentially some ramifications with the city for having an incomplete project by the time the entitlement expires. It's just not a risk that they're likely willing to take. So we think that's the correct interpretation of the process, but we also know that that's what's likely necessary for the project to happen.
Thank you. Staff, would you like to respond at all before we weigh in?
Can I just ask a question?
Wait, wait, one moment, please. You're good? Are, are you asking me a question of clarification or?
Are you asking, what are you, are you?
Laura was going to ask a question. I'm wondering if it's for me or?
Yes, it's for Hella.
For staff, yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
So by staff's interpretation, extending from three years from tonight, that would basically be November seventh of two thousand and twenty-six, which is really only by the applicant's reckoning, like a little over a year extension from what they currently have approved, a year and a half.
It would be an additional three years from tonight.
From tonight, but their approval goes to what month in two thousand and twenty-five? What they have now with the two six-month extensions, they go till when in two thousand and twenty-five?
January twenty, January twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-five.
January two thousand and twenty-five. So they're not getting much of an extension at all from us tonight. If, if they're, they're good to January two thousand and twenty-five, and we're taking them to November of two thousand and twenty-six, that's less than a year is what we're granting them tonight.
Right. And again, this is incredibly unique in that we've never had anybody request an ex, ex, planning board level extension before their administrative staff level extensions have expired.
Has, have conditions changed in terms of lenders' ability to or lenders' willingness to, to back a project that might, the approvals expire before the construction is complete?
I think that's the applicant's assertion, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we could, sorry, I don't, we could provide more context on that question if wants to. I mean, that, I can tell you from having done a lot.
I'm going to interrupt, sorry, and just have Hella speak first and then, but hold the thought, because I want to hear it. Hella.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just thinking out loud here a little bit. Charles is right. That is the first time too that I remember an applicant coming forward with this. With this situation, typically what we've seen is the first six months extension is required when, is requested when the three years are up. The six months are getting close, and an applicant requests an additional six months, and then a planning board extension is requested. And the last time the board discussed this particular issue, I think we were actually in a situation where the applicant had made all of the required requests within the right time period. By the time the board heard the request, we were already beyond the, the expiration period. So then the question was, do we count back? Or do we go forward? And the board decided to interpret it such that it was going to be from the date of the approval of the board. So it was interpreted in that context. And there might be opportunity to do a different interpretation in light of these circumstances.
Well, that's incredibly topical, because it sounds like they're probably not going to be the only people impacted by this. So I can see where Charles was kind of looking ahead to potential code changes. I interrupted you.
Hey, Lisa, I had a, I had a quick question. I don't know if you can see my hand or not.
Oh, Georgie. Um, yes, I'm like a disembodied Georgie. Go ahead. I'm not going to hear from the applicant.
Thank you. I, I guess my, my question to, to, to Hella or to Charles would be, you know, one way I see this, could, could the, could, rather than our extension being tacked on to the administrative twelve months, could it, could it be reversed where the applicant has the three years from tonight? And then, um, you know, does some, does some update to their application to the staff to get an additional twelve months on top of that?
You can't see them, but they're thinking.
I mean, we haven't done it before. We haven't interpreted our code in the, that way in the past. Again, to Hella's point, it's ambiguous to begin with. So we may need to think about a different solution. Maybe that is a a bit of a different interpretation from where we've been before, and I think that's what Hella was referring to.
Yeah, the last interpretation, when the board came up with that interpretation, I think there was also a desire not to penalize the applicant to get less than three years, just because there wasn't an opportunity to have a hearing in front of the planning board sooner than that. So that played into that as well.
Our calendaring that caused it. Okay, please, go ahead.
Thank you. So maybe a couple of quick points, and then I could turn over to Matt, who can talk about the financing market. The, the code does not, I think we are all agreeing, the code does not place a limit on the discretion of the planning board and how long the extension should be. It sounds like city tradition has been this three-year rule that because the initial time period for substantial completion is three years, that maybe an extension should be limited to three years. But the code does not expressly say anything about that. It just says that you can get two six-month extensions, and then it's up to the planning board to issue any other extension. So it could be two years, three years, it could be five or ten years. I mean, you probably wouldn't go that long, but there's no actual cap in the code. And the code also does not say from when does that extension run? So I would say that it's in your discretion as planning board to decide when should the extension run from? Should it run from tonight, or should it run from the extended date that we've already had extended through the administrative extensions? And it's also in your discretion to determine how long that, the extension should be. And there may be city tradition about it being a three-year rule, but I don't think that that's an actual legal cap on your extension abilities. It's just maybe what's only been done so far. But we're really in kind of unprecedented times for financing in the real estate market. We've come through a global pandemic. The global pandemic led to incredibly high interest rate increases, inflation, and you still aren't seeing construction costs impacted or coming down by that at all. You have a banking crisis that may be unfolding or maybe not, depending on who you're asking, but we've already had a few regional banks, Silicon Valley Bank go belly up. And so you have lenders who are caught in a position where they would love to be making loans, higher interest rates. But they're being told by the federal government that they've got to tighten up their balance sheets, because they do not want additional regional banks to succumb to what could become a broader banking crisis. So you have lenders who are looking at every project very conservatively, and they're digging into things like, details like this that maybe haven't been issues in the past. Or maybe they would have accepted a one or two or something, your extension. But now this is what's being required. I don't have to add anything on to that.
Fair enough. Charlie? Oh, yeah. From a timing standpoint, we have an existing lender in the project now within the, the horizontal piece of the project. uh, within the, the horizontal piece of the project. They have an option to become a vertical lender on the project when we go, um, in commence vertical construction. Right now, we're ready to submit for building permits. We believe that that is probably a six to nine month process. We've got 20 buildings. The, um, the city building permits, uh, they're saying they don't want us to submit more than four at a time. So when I say that six to nine months in order to get the permits, that could be conservative. Um, so we've got that period of six to nine months. We've got then mobilization and commencement of construction. Our estimated construction period is about 27 months right now as well. So the lender is really looking at this and, and saying, hey, I can't put out a loan on a project that theoretically could have entitlements that expire prior to you finishing. Uh, and that's really the source of, of the request is just that level of conservatism. And we really need to be into, you know, 2028. We, we don't think it's going to take that long. In a perfect world, we're going to start kind of towards the end of next year. We'll be a little bit ahead of, ahead of schedule. We'll come in just over two years on construction. You know, that would get us to 2027. But the lender really needs a margin of error on top of just our perfect schedule in order to get comfort. So again, that's the genesis of the request.
Thank you. Thank you for that. You're kind of our guinea pigs for this. I think more will be coming forward and so sorry, you're our guinea pigs and thank you for being our guinea pigs. Um, I want to open it up in just a moment for board questions for the applicant. Um, before I do so, is there anything else that staff would like to weigh in particularly on? Uh, I'm thinking about just con- confirming the discretion of planning board in terms of both start date and length. And I'll have more to say about that later, but I just wanted to see if that argument held with our legal counsel or, or not.
Yeah, Charlie is right that there is no description of the length of the extension period for an extension granted by planning board. However, um, the section, section starts out with and the general rule is if nothing differently is approved in the original development agreement, that a development has to be completed within three years from the time of approval. And if, um, a phasing plan is approved, each phase actually has to be three years. So there is a clear intent, um, that three years is generally considered to be the right timeframe to complete a development. Um, and if that's not the case, then a development plan, or the, the development phasing should be considered as part of the approval, but that's a different process than what we're in right now.
Okay, and I'm not, I don't know that they'll want to this seriously, but we'll see where we go with this, but, um, one option for this applicant or another applicant could be to come back in a separate hearing and request phasing, like could it be turned into a phased project?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. All right, okay. So that's not, I realize a lot of money and time has already gone into this. I'm honestly voting for that, but sharing that that's an option. Thank you, Hella. Um, all right, I've, I've been talking a lot. We've been hearing a great deal from the applicant, members of the board, questions. Mark, please.
If, uh, in, in light of lots of new information tonight, I came into this meeting tonight thinking, yeah, whatever. We'll approve an extension, makes sense, okay. But obviously this is, uh, things are changing and, uh, there's lots of interpretation going on here. How would phasing and phasing of extensions be seen by your lenders? Are they, are your horizontal and vertical lenders, are they, uh, in for the whole thing? You don't have different lenders on different pieces and, and, uh, anyway, how, how would they view it rather than me?
There's a little bit of complexity in this project because of the affordable housing along with the market rate housing. There's a concurrency requirement between the affordable and the market. And so those two things sort of by statute need to come at the same time. And then the market really all is one project that all comes at once. So a phasing wouldn't really, um, assist us in any way, but I appreciate the thinking.
Okay, and then for staff, during, uh, the pandemic and, and you're, you've stated that you're seeing, uh, a large influx of, uh, staff level, uh, extension requests. And, and we made modifications to the use, the use, uh, review criteria to accommodate some of that because of the pandemic. So we have some precedent, it seems to me, for, uh, interpretation or modification of the code based on, based on, uh, highly unusual circumstances, unprecedented circumstances. So, um, would there be a, if, if we, if the, if it was the board's desire to, uh, have the extension go till 2028? Is it a better precedent? Any thoughts on putting the three-year extension on top of the two six-month extensions or canceling those out and using a more liberal interpretation of the code, granting a four-year extension? Or is there some other way that without just totally bending the code that, um, we could uh, uh, based on these, these circumstances that we find ourselves in now post-pandemic, to accommodate them, does the staff have feelings about a methodology for getting to, uh, the applicant's request? And not that that's our, necessarily our goal, but I'm, if, if we're trying to figure out how to, how to do something other than kill this thing, um, that would, my understanding, my request would be, what do you guys think would be a path, a path forward for us to consider?
Well, I, you do have an obligation to apply the code consistently. Um, so in light of that, I would recommend that you apply the three-year rule. I do think that there is a better argument for allowing the two six-month extensions plus the three years and not counting from today in light of the fact that this is a new circumstance and maybe the interpretation is an applicant can get two six-month extensions plus three years, but not less than three years if, if the scheduling ends up being such that it, the planning board calendar creates an issue for a timely extension to be granted.
When were the two six-month extent, were they, were they granted simultaneously or was it?
No, they're consecutive.
They're consecutive. Well, no, I, I mean, um, were they granted at the same? Did you guys say, did they come to you and say, we'd like a six-month extension and another six-month extension because that's what you can do? Or did they come to you and ask for one and then later ask for another?
That's correct, yeah. That's the latter.
The latter.
The code does talk about, um, when the city manager grants the six months extensions. Um, the manager has to make a finding that the applicant will be able to substantially complete the phase of the development. Or it can be granted if it's necessary to allow the applicant to request an extension from the planning board. So it seems this circumstance, um, that the applicant already knows that two six-months extensions won't be enough was anticipated.
But they're not actually using either six-month extension yet.
Yes.
Okay. Is it possible to withdraw those two six-month extensions? Grant a three-year extension and then you grant them two six-month extensions? Not that, that it ultimately result, results in the same date, but I, I don't know if that's any.
No, the, it says after the applicant has exhausted any extension granted pursuant to paragraph B1, which is the administrative extensions, the planning board can grant an extension.
Thank you.
I think we're going to keep talking to staff later on, but I also want to, um, make sure that we're asking questions of applicants. Laura, did you have one? No, anyone else questions for the applicant specifically?
Um, so. Yes. Hello? Um, so you had up your schedule and on the schedule you had a 27-month construction timeframe. Um, and you were anticipating nine months for permitting. So we're talking close to three years?
Yes, that would be if we had permits today. There's a couple of things we've got to do prior to being able to submit the permits. There's a financial guarantee that we're ready to put up. Um, the, the bank has a, a say in us putting up that financial guarantee as well. So they wanted to make sure that we had a clear path, um, to being able to construct the project before we put the financial guarantee up. But it's a couple of steps we've got to do, but sure, 36 months in a perfect world, if we started today would get you all the way through, but, um, you know, in construction, things always go wrong.
Well, the term is also substantially complete. So I'm hearing that there are two qualifiers. One is what the bank sees and one is what the city sees. So substantially complete may not look the same from the city as it would from your lender. Is that, would you agree to that? Am I understanding that there, there's a difference there?
There could be. The, the issue with us with the lenders is that we can't start unless the lender will give us the loan.
Correct.
Uh, but yeah, I, I, I think there is probably a difference in the way they're looking at it versus actually the way you guys.
Substantial completion is, is a defined term in the code, uh, in the building code. And you, you're really done. I mean, you're all but like a few touch-up items. The project is.
And does the bank see it?
Necessarily in a phased project. What the code says is that substantially complete means the time when the construction is sufficiently complete so the owner can occupy the work or portion thereof for the use which is intended. So on a, you know, property with 20 buildings, you know, I think we have some discretion there.
Well, that's the reason that we actually do have the, um, various tech docs in there so that we can actually close out some portions of the project and be substantially complete before the other piece is substantially complete. Uh, but you can't occupy it till you get a CO. You can't get a CO until you really, you got, you got to be done. But you can, because of the way we've done the sequencing of the tech docs, people could be occupying part of the project before the thing is entirely complete.
And I think I heard you say earlier that you could submit for a permit tomorrow?
Except for the couple of things that Matt mentioned, the drawings are ready.
Mm-hmm.
So once we get the hiccup, um, well, not a hiccup, we get the, the, um, financial guarantee in place, we can submit. There's a few pieces of paperwork that need to be done. Plaid has to be recorded. There's some steps, but they, they're all contingent on that financial guarantee.
Thank you.
I had a question for the applicant, um, can't see my hands.
Yeah, go ahead, Georgie.
Thanks. Um, I, I'm, I'm trying to get my head around, um, the 27 months of construction because these buildings don't really look like something that would take 27 months for substantial completion. Um, are you intending to phase the project as you construct it?
Uh, not true phasing. There are, uh, 20 buildings. Um, so the 27 months that Matt was mentioning is really from the start of construction of the first of those buildings to the completion of the last. Any one building might take.
The first set of buildings, how long would the fir-, I, I'm just trying to understand a realistic timeframe for the, for the first set of buildings that you're constructing. When do you intend to have those completed?
Yeah, that, that might be a, you know, nine months to a year to finish, um, a couple of, a couple of the first few buildings somewhere in that, somewhere in that range.
Why does it, why does it take the, why would it take you 27? Why couldn't you complete the buildings simultaneously? Is it a, a funding issue or?
No, you know, the, the contractors don't have unlimited manpower. We don't build 20 foundations all at the same time. They would move from one set of buildings to another uh, with the various trades as they go through. We, we don't bring things up simultaneously. Um, their manpower, contractors aren't built that way to build 20 buildings at, at all at once.
So the, I, I mean, for our, for our clarity that as far as your schedule goes, you, you, you know, you, you, you have a phased program that brings you substantially under that three years, um, needed. It's just a question of how you want the product approved, not necessarily how it would actually be built. Which I think is probably the difference between what we're seeing here because three months is, three years is a pretty long time. So thank you, appreciate it. Don't figure it out.
Thank you, Georgie. Uh, other questions for the applicant? All right, thank you. Um, Hella, I'd like to ask a question of clarification to staff. Um, I think you probably said this perfectly clearly and I did not take it in perfectly clearly. Could you speak again to where you see planning board's discretion tonight and kind of particularly in terms of dates?
Yeah, I what I said was I, I encourage you to follow the three-year rule as that's been very consistently applied. The ambiguity really is and when does the planning board level extension start? Um, I think that's where the biggest ambiguity is and that interpretation to start it with the planning board approval date, um, occurred with the project where I believe the six months extensions had both been taken advantage of and they had passed by the time the planning board heard it because the application for the extension was filed within the right time period. It has to be filed before, um, the expiration of the approval occurs. But then it took some while, some time to get a hearing in front of the planning board as you're aware and sometimes you're very busy and project get pushed a few weeks or months. Um, so the planning board discussed, there's ambiguity here. How do we interpret that? And they decided to interpret it that it was going to count from the day on, but it was having in mind that they didn't want to penalize the applicant for having this period of unknown that was solely due to the planning board calendar. Um, so I think there could be an interpretation that the intent of the code is to give at least two six months twice plus three years. Um, but then if the planning board hearing date would take away some weeks or months because of how it's scheduled, then the planning board will always grant three, um, three years from the date of its approval and not less.
Okay, so approval date would still be tonight, not the end of their second six month?
No, I think you could, you could draw a distinction to that situation when the planning board made that decision.
Okay.
That you also think that at least two six months extensions are intended to be granted plus three years.
And Charles, as you're kind of looking ahead to a whole bunch of these potentially coming up in front of us, um, and you were talking about potential code review, I realize this is really planning board making a discretionary decision about how we interpret code where it is not 100% clear. Um, so we're not making any code changes at this time. We're exercising discretion in a quasi judicial hearing. Um, but would such an interpretation alleviate some of the pressure, pretension, other projects if we were to consistently apply such an interpretation?
You, you know, it's a great question and I appreciate the consideration. Our hope is that we'll be advancing a package of code changes uh, by end of Q1 next year that would address this. So I think hopefully that outruns the ones that, um, I, are keeping me up at night. So that's the hope.
All right, uh, we have a question from Mel. Yeah, sure.
Um, so, uh, Hella or whomever would have the answer, um, when was the original three-year expiration of this project? You, because you said that the six-month extensions were.
I don't think the three years have expired yet.
No, they haven't. The original expiration date from the site review, the three years would be July 27th, 2024.
2024.
Right, so next July.
So, um, Hella, if we had some interpretive leeway and could just add the three years to the original expiration. And could just add the three years to the original expiration. That would give the project to 2027. Is that something we could do? Or, or are the two six month? Extensions? Like? Have to be? Used?
Well, that's.
I'm just trying to keep it.
It's, it doesn't expressly stated. Um, and I think in the past interpretation. Has been to not go from.
Three, three.
That original date.
Okay. Thank you.
I saw someone from the applicant team really eager to try to answer, address something. I'm gonna let you come up, this is probably your last chance, so. You know, you said, well.
Yeah, I, uh, I just wanted to clarify, I guess that, um, the, what Hella is saying is something that I would agree with. And I think that I just wanted to make clear that there's, there's not daylight between us on that interpretation. With, with, when, when, I guess what I'm understanding, Hella, what you're saying is that. In some other circumstance, the date had already expired by the time you guys had your hearing on it. And so granting a three year extension from that expired date would have shortchanged the applicant in that scenario. It would have gotten something less than three years. This is a different situation. And so you could still abide by the city's traditional three year rule. We don't have to argue about whether that's the, the right thing or not. You can abide by that. But still extend the date from the extended date. So which would be fine with us? Yeah.
Great, thank you. Uh, any further questions for the applicant? All right, um, I, this time I'd like to request that members of the public court either present. I'm not sure exactly how it works here, so I may hand it over to someone shortly. And then if you're online, I think this is that moment to use that raise hand function. Um, and again, if we have more than 15 total across the two forums, uh, it will be two minutes each. And go ahead, sorry.
People that have signed up ahead of time here, I'll give you the names. Probably can't hear me very well. But as, as you mentioned to anybody that's participating online, go ahead and use that raise hand function.
So we will be hearing from folks in the room first. I think I'm being brought some names. Uh, thank you. And if anyone in the room has not had the chance to put their name on a card, um, if you could go up and make sure you get the opportunity to speak. All right, first.
And Lisa, just letting you know, we have about six hands raised.
Okay, let me, let me count real quick, sit tight, everybody. Thank you. Okay, so everybody will get three minutes. So if you've planned for three minutes, you have your three. Uh, and number one, uh, please Julie Dye, if you could come forward and speak, thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm Julie Dye, I live in Gun Barrel and the city of Boulder. I'm speaking on behalf of the Gun Barrel Community Alliance, representing more than 500 people in Gun Barrel. It's been four years since we started this conversation and much has changed. One thing that has not changed is the fact that you approving this development again. Would remove one of the largest pieces of industrial manufacturing spaces remaining in both Gun Barrel and the city. This past year, Boulder's Director of Planning and Development Services and City Planners. Recommended to City Council that residential development should be prohibited in IM areas like this one. Deemed critical by the Boulder Chamber of Commerce. But we don't actually know what's critical here because the city continues to go back on promises for Gun Barrel planning. The Celestial Seasonings PUD made a legal promise to our community. The annex agreement requires five acres of land for recreational space. Because even then, city leaders recognized the lack of amenities in Gun Barrel. Not only were none of these promises delivered, the PUD was entirely omitted from documents provided by city staff and the developers. When you approved this the first time around. The Gun Barrel Center Community Plan was approved in 2004 and completely pushed aside by development in 2015. Promises ignored. On a motion by David Enzine and Harmon Zuckerman, the planning board voted unanimously to prioritize Gun Barrel. Establishing the urgent need for a Gun Barrel sub-community plan and the importance of delivering on this commitment. Before major land use decisions were made. The Gun Barrel Sub-Community Plan was again marked as a top five priority for the 2021 BDCP midterm update. Yet again, promises ignored. And now as we enter 2024, Gun Barrel remains uninformed by the community's vision to be developed in collaboration. But with city and county planners, resiliency specialists and other experts. We have clearly reached a tipping point in Gun Barrel. We are asking you reject approval on this development extension again. Until there is an approved sub-community plan. Keep your promises to go to Gun Barrel. And I just want to acknowledge the fact that they, they've asked for seven years to build from their 2021 approval. Seven years and you're talking about granting them six. Okay, Hella said tonight, the way it's been interpreted and applied is three years from approval. She said you have an obligation to apply the code consistently. So I'm going to ask you now, what ramification, what are the ramifications? If you open the door to six or seven years to developers? There are 500 people in Gun Barrel listening to your response. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. And this is our first meeting back and I just want to say it's really nice to actually see you in the room and have public comment presence. So we love the people online too. We love that it's more, uh, inclusive that way, but it's just nice to see people, so hi. All right, next up, Carmen, Ron, please come up.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Thanks for this chance to comment on this proposal. My name is Carmen Barron. My husband and I have lived in Gun Barrel for eight years. And we urgently request that this project be allowed to expire. Adding up to 600 new residents, its spine road was never a smart or realistic idea. This project is high density with low affordable housing, low parking, 3% low mixed use. Yet this project was thoughtlessly approved during our international COVID crisis. Since that approval, numerous economic factors have evolved that need to be considered, including. The current glut of high cost rental apartments in Boulder. A drop in school enrollments, forcing school districts to consolidate and strategize to close education buildings. Changing workforce needs. Companies are supporting work from home business models and paring down costs. While evacuating existing business and commercial spaces such as Gun Barrel's Medtronic, First Bank. And Crispin Porter and Boguski Ad Agency. Maybe cutting edge Boulder should incentivize commercial owners, developers and BVSD. To create real plans to repurpose such empty buildings already standing within the city's current infrastructure. This spine road site is a light industrial use area, was a thriving wildlife, wildlife habitat for many species. And is one of very few open space areas in our neighborhood. Boulder held no one accountable for the PUD and annexation commitments made back when Celestial Seasonings was first built. And instead, the city allowed a long established prey dog colony to be uprooted. So now this parcel sits as a barren eyesore surrounded by chain link fencing. This project has very few affordable housing units and highly insufficient parking planned. Yet a potential explosion of 600 plus residents and their vehicles could be dropped on our community. Parking would naturally spill over into existing neighborhoods. And these 600 plus people would also be frequenting Gun Barrel Commons Park. Next door, a private park that belongs to neighboring condos. Shouldn't the city protect these existing neighbors? At this moment, the city has the chance to correct this course. Take down that chain link fence, stop the unnecessary infill of this land. We do not need more housing here, including possible empty housing. We need a Gun Barrel Sub-Community Plan that incorporates local neighborhood input. And focuses on the needs of the existing Gun Barrel community. One last thing, perhaps this developer should abandon the spine road project with a goodwill donation of this land to the city. Much like the recent dead in the water Fruhoffs project at 33rd and Arapahoe. And the city could actually honor past commitments to make this site a wildlife preserve. This project is still not appropriate for Gun Barrel. These numbers do not work for anybody. And approving an extension now would again simply be disrespectful.
Thank you for your time and for speaking. Next up, we have April Lyons.
Hi, um, my name's April Lyons. I live in Gun Barrel and I'm, sit on the board of the Gun Barrel Community Alliance. The pandemic brought unanticipated changes to daily life and the workforce. In January of 2019, only about 4.7% of, of the US workforce worked remotely. As of now, 27% work fully remote. The Celestial Seasonings project was proposed in 2019 and presented as jobs to housing. Because of remote work, people have the option to live where they want and have more space. It's obvious that remote work offers many advantages that prove beneficial to families. People can look outside of Boulder and that's one big reason that Boulder's shrinking. Since the pandemic started, Boulder City has lost 5,200 individuals. The pandemic has changed life as we know it. As of right now, there are over 1,400 vacant apartments in the city of Boulder. And there are hundreds still in the pipeline, but yet we have no housing and no need for these apartments somehow. And we need these apartments somehow, we need them. The main reason this project got approved and got the green light in the first place was the affordable housing aspect. But is affordable housing in Boulder really affordable? The answer is no. For example, at the ellipse, which is this all housing, a one bedroom, one bath apartment costs $1,500 a month. You would have to make 60 grand a year to afford a 566 square foot apartment. We need a real solution to the affordable housing crisis. Let's take an honest look at the data and listen to the community. Pre and post pandemic are completely different worlds.
Thank you. All right, next up, we have Dorothy Donahue.
Hi, my name is Dorothy Donahue, can everybody hear me? I am part of the Gun Barrel Community Alliance and I've lived in Gun Barrel for 26 years. Boulder families are leaving the city in search of single family homes to the east of Boulder. We see the exodus in the declining enrollment in Boulder schools. What began prior to 2018 was exasperated by the pandemic. Current projection from the board, school board will be that there'll be 2,100 less students in the next five years. Mark Wallach told, um, the Gun Barrel Community Alliance. There used to be an old but affordable family housing on 30th Street. The homes were torn down and replaced with high density development, very similar to what we, as proposed at Celestial. There were only a handful of children who moved into the development. And now the city is tasked with a critical decision around schools closures. 60% of celestial developments are studios and one bedroom apartments. The city says housing, 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 and despite all concerns, high density is approved. Other family friendly housing like duplexes and townhouses make more sense. There's a low term economic and equity issue, losing families. Boulder needs to address the problem and not the symptoms. On a final side note, remember that small 1,000 foot library annex that was promised in this development? We were told by the library directors, another place was selected in Gun Barrel for that annex, not this one. Knowing there is, will be less interest in apartments in the future. Why would the city Boulder, city planning board approve to have more half empty apartments? Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next up, we have Randall Clark, and I think that's the last of our in person.
I hope you can hear me, I can't be as eloquent as my other members of the Gun Barrel Community Alliance. So I'm not going to repeat anything they said, but I will say that one of the things we have heard over and over, which was repeated more than once by them. Is that we do not need more apartments and we definitely don't need more single or 500 square foot apartments. We need homes for families to live in this town. And I think that's one major consideration that we have to take, that we all have to consider. Because even the closest. Uh, set of apartments which are built right in the middle of foothills, but it somehow works. Is still uncompletely occupied by what percentage, I don't know, but they've been sitting vacant. For as long as the thing has been built, there's still signs for, you know, apartments available. And I'm sure that's true in Boulder and all over Boulder. And I think it's something that we all have to really consider in a very big way. This is not just the decision about one builder. And this conversation about interest rates and changing. Interest rates have changed and been fluctuating for many, many years. Obviously COVID had an effect and will have an effect, but, um. I just don't think we can hinge every decision that they're going to make and that we're going to make. On the possibility of interest rates changing. And that's all I really want to say, but I support everything that everybody else has said.
Thank you, thank you to everyone here, uh, in person. Is that, I'm looking to make sure we've got everyone, all right, great. Uh, we will now be shifting to online comment and I think someone else is going to be running that, so I'll silence myself.
This is Vivian, I can help out with that. So I'll just run down the line, each person will have three minutes, same as people in person. Um, you can go ahead and introduce yourself and then go ahead and speak. So we'll start with Chris Goodman, followed by Nora Swan Foster. Chris, please go ahead, you have three minutes. And you may have to unmute yourself from your end.
Thank you, um, I'm, I'm speaking today because I, I know that I already wrote a letter to you guys, I hope you got it. And I'm repeating a lot of what's already been said, but it really does require emphasis. One thing that's not in my notes is I did want to emphasize that somehow the materials have all been available. To rebuild the, the fire marshal, uh, the Marshall Fire Homes that subdivision is nearly, um, it's, it's doing a magnificent job of building. Back and, um, those materials have been available. Anyway, to my notes, it's since the develop, the initial development proposal four years ago, significant changes have occurred in our area. Medtronic's was, has departed and Boulder now faces an oversight, oversupply of high cost rental apartments. Please, please do your research and check the prices of this particular builder's apartments and see what the current availability looks like and is listed. You can go to the live at mysa.com, M Y S A. Head to the bottom of the page and see the availability. Here they have a 570 square foot studio apartment, uh, listed today for $2,192 to $2,751. This is for inefficiency. And, and on top of that, they charge for parking and trash. The Gun Barrel area still lacks essential amenities and grapples with the deteriorating infrastructure. We do not even have accessible park. The closest public park requires the community to travel across highway 119 and is not safely walkable or bikeable. In the past year, the city staff has advised that the city council to ban residential developments and industrial manufactured zones. While this may benefit the developers in the short term. It really doesn't benefit the community. It could lead to a long-term loss for Boulder by eliminating one of Gun Barrel's largest parcels, um, industrial manufacturer parcels. BVSD enrollment has declined as families are leaving the city in search of more family friendly housing. Parking is inadequate for this development, causing an overflow into the neighborhood areas and we just can't support that. The Mesa development by the same architect faces numerous parking complaints. Not all studio and one bedroom homes can manage with just one vehicle, especially in a location distant from amenities. Gun Barrel lacks public transportation and even the proposed shuttle only serves Gun Barrel. The nearest grocery store is a 34 minute walk away and requires crossing a major busy street, 63rd. The developer's plan designates only 3% of the space for other uses while claiming to be mixed use. True mixed use developments, which the city and its residents desire, should offer more substantial mix of commercial and residential spaces. A successful example by true definition of mixed use is the Prospect Community in Longmont. But that's not what we need here. We need, we need a public park. Please consider the residents of the city of Boulder who live out here in Gun Barrel. We pay city taxes and we're technically city. We know the struggles and what the community infrastructure can support.
Thank you, Chris, that's three minutes, if you could just wrap it up.
I'm sorry, I'm checking about that. Please also look at the Zillow. I'm sorry, I'm checking about that. Please also look at the Zillow rentals there. There are so many currently available condos across the street from this planned development. Thank you so much for your time tonight.
Thank you. Next up, we have Nora Swan Foster, followed by Stephen Foster. Nora, please go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Nora Swan Foster, and I live in the Deerfield subdivision. And I'm a member of the Gunbarrel Alliance, and our home backs up to Spine Road, a road that's not been kept up and which has unreasonable truck and car traffic for its size and neighborhood. I've lived here for 30 years, and this land that is being developed was an amazing wildlife space for our neighborhood. I've spoken several times against the proposed development at 4775 Spine Road, and I'm respectfully requesting that an extension for this project be denied. It never should have been passed. I'd like to remind people that while these are unprecedented times, as you all are talking about, we were in unprecedented times when this process went through a COVID planning process, which was highly unsatisfactory, and it was approved nonetheless. The reasons I'm against any extension is that the educated concerns, and I will say very educated people weighed in on this from over 100 residents who attended the first planning meeting, were not considered. The concerns of parking, traffic, lack of amenities are not part of this extension. News of the library having a new location is very telling. Further, hearing that it will take three years to build this project out, three years of construction, trucks on these roads, noise is even more mad and disturbing to hear tonight. It's clear the communities who live around this project are not being fully considered. It's so upsetting. If the extension goes to 2028, this is completely unacceptable. Market conditions are and will change between now and then. There's no guarantee that this project will be any more appropriate for our future needs, for our environmental and energy responsibilities, and requirements for our nature zoning changes that the city might dare to consider regarding sustainable building in a time of climate crisis. These issues really seriously need to be considered, and I really, it surprises me that in Boulder, where we are supposed to be so progressive, we are not considering climate crisis issues. And the Gunbarrel Alliance has not been faithfully respected in their concerns, and I think they've done an excellent job laying out the points. So I'd like to see this application expire without renewal. I would like to see the fencing removed. It is interfering with wildlife passage. It is damaged, and it's an eyesore. And this is one of the first examples, actually, that illustrates just how the builders and the project managers are not considering the concerns of the neighborhood and the Gunbarrel Alliance and their great work. So thank you to the Gunbarrel Alliance for being continued faithful advocates for what we need in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Nora. Next, we have Stephen Foster, followed by Stephen Zawaski. Please go ahead, Stephen.
Good evening. You probably have heard already what I will say this evening, but my name is Stephen Foster, and I live in the Deerfield subdivision on Spine Road. I'm also a member of the Gunbarrel Community Alliance and have spoken to the planning board concerning this development on Spine Road in the past. I am speaking tonight because I respectfully request that you deny the extension requests by the applicant. I understand that the questions from local residents that have not been addressed, as you've heard some of, are not up for discussion here, which I believe is also wrong. I believe local residents' concerns should be addressed in this process. The applicant is requesting a three-year extension to 2028. This is unacceptable after the extension's already given. I understand from the discussion here tonight that this has not been done before by the planning board, and this would be a spectral consideration for this applicant again. And it is an inconsistent application of the code. I think you should ask yourself, why are we doing this? This is an important issue for Boulder, not just Gunbarrel. And at a minimum, it could be clarified and presented to the public before any decision is made on this extension and other extensions like it. I believe it is better to reject this extension. We have heard from the applicant that they cannot meet their current approved extensions. Clearly, the project is too big for them, and it's probably too big for anyone. And the project of this size is appropriate only, and probably smaller, only in discussion with the Boulder Community Alliance and as part of the Gunbarrel Community Plan. And as Nora said, over two years of construction on Spine Road is a huge burden on the Gunbarrel community and an example, again, of one area where this community has not been heard by the planning department or the city of Boulder. And finally, if the extension is approved, I really believe it's important to remove the fencing. It's frequently damaged. It has not been repaired by the owner. It's dangerous, and it is an eyesore. And I'm concerned that at some point, a child will find their way in there and be unable to find their way out. And this is a real concern for this community. So please reconsider and reject this application. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen. Next up, we have Stephen Zawaski, followed by Angie Mashaw. Stephen, please go ahead.
Hello, I'm unmuted. Yep, so. Am I unmuted? Yeah, I am, okay. So I am Stephen Zawaski. I live in Gunbarrel. I've been there for about eight years. So I'm actually taking the time out of my first vacation, nine years, because this is such a horrible thing that's been happening in the community in general. But I want to address some of the main points here about this extension. So the first meeting happened during COVID, when you're already in a drastically changing financial situation. Interest rates are already starting to spike. We knew these things were happening. We had over 100 people in these meetings come in and even more come and email and talk about the problems we're going to have financially. The developers promised us, the applicants, that they would be fine, they would fund it, they would get the things. And now here we are in, you know, 2023, and they're asking for the same things again. I don't see any change. The economy hasn't improved. The US actually has been downgraded by the Fitch ratings, so our economy is looking pretty bad. We're in the highest interest rate in the last 22 years. I'm not seeing how they qualify for this. Is the city taking their financial burden on? Meanwhile, where other housing projects were able to find labor and materials and cost, especially in Superior, Colorado, after the fires, they were able to rebuild. They're asking us to bend the rules again for this little development that they have. Why are we doing this? This doesn't follow suit. This doesn't make any sense. And it's just additional points that have been happening. So you know, that fence has been up there. It's been a sort of commuting. It's falling apart. It's, you know, wildlife inhibiting wildlife passage. Another key point, the original proposal, part of the huge discussion point we had in the regional debate, that there was going to be a library extension there, that fell through. They failed on their promise in the proposal. This proposal needs redone. This extension needs stopped. This can't keep going on and bending our backs over for these guys who are trying to do all these terrible, you know, build this. It's, they need a better design that fits. We need a sub-community plan. And it's basically everything that everyone said before me. I think that's about it. So I can, I'll let you guys go.
Thank you, Stephen, for your contribution. Next up, we have Angie Mashaw, followed by Jan or Yan Rasmussen. Please go ahead, Angie.
Hi, my name's Angie Mashaw. I live in Huntington Point condos east of the development. I'm a member of the Gunbarrel Community Alliance, and I really appreciate those of you that appeared there in person tonight and all the hard work that you've done for our community. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I support my neighbors that have already spoken. I asked the planning board to please listen to those of us that already live here. Tonight seems to be about a developer in a vacuum, not in a living, breathing community that has been here for a very long time. Four years has passed, a very tough four years of waiting, watching, seeing what happens, a very ugly disruptive fence that we have to look at every day when we're out walking and enjoying, trying to enjoy the view. Things have changed. The majoring, major employer, Medtronic, is all but gone. There's a glut of market-rate apartments in Boulder that aren't full. Apartment vacancy rates are increasing. This is not a mixed-use development, only 3%. That's not apartments. And please let this return to the light industrial zoning that we are lacking, that kind of zoning space left in the city of Boulder and in Gunbarrel. We need a Gunbarrel sub-community plan. We need a public park. We need some decisions made and not allow our lives to be disrupted by a developer. They're asking for almost a decade to do this development, and that was never part of the deal when this was approved. And it's like, we're just keep moving those goalposts and moving the chains just to see where and how we can bend over backwards for a developer. When we're a community and we need infrastructure, we need support from a planning board. For us, we already live here. I've been here 43 years. Please let this expire, and please remove the fence, and please do not approve the extension. Thank you so much for your time and your service to our community. I know it's a difficult job.
Thank you, Angie.
Thank you.
So next, we have Jan or Yan Rasmussen. Please, you can introduce yourself with your correct pronunciation, followed by Eli Kaelin. Please go ahead. Please go ahead, Jan or Yan Rasmussen.
Good evening. John Rasmussen. I am a city of Boulder resident since 1968, a resident of Gunbarrel for over 30 years. I am aware, let me say to the planning board, I appreciate your service and understand the limitations of what choices you can make this evening in the planning code. That said, I'm certainly a Gunbarrel Alliance member and support the comments tonight and all the way through the processes that were ignored. That this isn't a good addition to our community, nor does it add anything to our community. And to hear tonight that this disruption that started several years ago in our community in anticipation of this possible approval, then approval, then not getting to permitting, and asking for an extension to 2028 to possibly build it out indicates to me that possibly we have the wrong contractor and applicant for a project of this size. If they do not have the wherewithal to move to permitting without financing in place, they may not be able to finish the project in a timely fashion. I would ask, this doesn't get extended, because I don't have any faith that this is going to go well for our neighbors. I live a few blocks from here. I already know what the traffic is on Spine. We have no bus system anymore that supports this planned development, so everybody who lives there and goes to the grocery store or town is going to drive, and we gave up having parking places that would accommodate the number of residents. This really has not worked out in the long run to be a good decision by the planning board, and I would ask that you don't extend it. Thank you again for your service. Good evening.
Thank you. Okay, final participant from the public is Eli Kaelin. Please go ahead. You have three minutes.
All right, I'm officially unmuted and speaking. Well, I just want to say thank you to the planning board for this. Ultimately, it's a selfless contribution to come here every Tuesday night and listen to what the future of Boulder will be. But I also want to take everybody on a journey back to 1967, when the, basically when open space was voted in and we created this utopian society. We were amazingly forward-thinking and moving forward into creating a, ultimately, this amazing community that we all are able to enjoy and nurture and grow in. But going forward, I also want you to think about the fact that are we on the fringe of evolution right now? Are we thinking about where Boulder is going to be in the next 20, 30, 40 years? Like, I am actually pro-development, but I wanted to be in a way where the community as a whole can ultimately grow and foster and be present with each other. So I would ask you to take a step back and deny the application until a larger plan that implements a forward-thinking Boulder is implemented. And thank you very much.
Thank you so much, and thanks for everyone online for bearing with us with this moving timer. We'll try to figure something out, something better for next time. Over to your chair.
Thank you. Thank you to everyone who came to speak in person and online. We really appreciate your time. We're going to go ahead and take a 10-minute break, as we've been going for quite a while. I'll give everyone a chance to get up, stretch, move around, run to the bathroom, whatever you need to do. And then when we come back, we'll move into planning board discussion. So thank you. And then when we come back, we'll move into planning board discussion. So, thank you. So we're now at the part of this public hearing item where planning board will be deliberating. I'd like to ask staff if you could please put back up, there was a slide from the staff presentation that kind of talked about in this quasi judicial hearing, the criteria that, it was like a short version of A, B, and C, I think. If we could just get that back up, because I think that's going to be important for us to remember.
Locked out of the
Of the lockdown, okay.
We'll get it up in a second.
All right, my iPhone and the big clock are slightly in disagreement, not just the hour, but I'll go ahead and call the meeting back to order. So we're now at the part of this public hearing item where planning board will be deliberating. I'd like to ask staff if you could please put back up, there was a slide from the staff presentation that kind of talked about in this quasi judicial hearing, the criteria that, it was like a short version of A, B, and C, I think. If we could just get that back up, because I think that's going to be important for us to remember.
Locked out of the
Of the lockdown, okay.
We'll get it up in a second. It was the the review criteria. As like the A, B, and C.
And the reason I'm having that pulled up, we'll look at it in a moment, is that particularly in quasi judicial hearings, the planning board is limited in the kinds of decisions we can make depending on the item that's in front of us and what the code sets out that we can and can't do. And I just want to make sure that we're referring back to that as we start our deliberation. So that's why I'm putting that up first and foremost, just so that we hopefully stay on target and on task. Yes, go ahead, Laura.
So Lisa, I appreciate you pointing us to the criteria and that these are, you know, the decision in front of us is, does the applicant meet the criteria for an extension? And these are the criteria we have to use. And so my suggestion would be that we go through them. Everybody talk about A, did they meet A? Everybody talk about B, did they meet B? And then are there any additional conditions that we think are appropriate based on the code changes? That seems to me to be the only thing we can really discuss tonight.
That is my interpretation as well. Any other, we'll get into that shortly. But any members of the planning board have concerns with that path forward? Okay. And I'll just briefly use my mic to say that I think we heard really heartfelt commentary from members of the public. And again, when we are in a quasi judicial proceeding, we must obey the code and carry out our appointed duties.
Lisa, just so you know, it, that, whatever's on the screen there is not popping up online. Following along, that, that might be helpful.
Yeah, I think that'd be very helpful. Maybe Georgie, if you could speak back up to that when it reappears in front of us. Or for you, I mean, not us.
I just want to point out that that is not, that is exactly what's in the code, not, it's not a condensed or modified version. It's exactly what's there.
Yep, these are the criteria. Okay, hopefully we'll hear shortly that this is visible to Georgie and also to members of the public. So I'm going to read off A and then we can have any discussion to A. So A is criteria for demonstrating reasonable diligence. An applicant may show that it has exercised reasonable diligence for providing evidence that it has done substantial work towards completing the project. Such evidence may include, without limitation, drafting plans for building permits or technical document review. Applications for building permits or other permits that are required priority issuance of building permits, site preparation and grading or commencement of the construction of a portion of the project. I'll just briefly say that I, I thought that was demonstrated and open the floor for other members to, to agree, disagree, or speak to that.
It has popped up on the screen now, thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you, Georgie. Actually, Georgie, since you're, you're there, maybe I'll start with you and then I'll move to work and go this way to start and next one I'll go the other way.
Yeah, so, so overall, I, I agree that the applicant has demonstrated reasonable diligence around this. I, I will say that it, it's interesting to me that they have phasing at their disposal as a way to have this, the timeline be met as is. I mean, one thing that's, that's interesting, and, and again, like, it, it's confusing because the applicant talked about nine months of permitting, then twenty-seven months for construction but to substantial completion for the entirety of the project, which is essentially a, you know, close to a three-year timeline as is. That has nothing to do with the extenuating circumstances of financing, et cetera, the permitting and construction of that. Nothing has changed there. And so the question I, I have is, you know, i- if they would have had the nine months of permitting and then substantial completion for the first days of the first grouping of buildings, which is only nine months to maybe a year. That would be well inside a three-year timeframe of an extension that we could grant without, without concern. And so I, I'm mixed on this because of that, because there is a clear path to be able to, to meet that. And I don't see how the extenuating of circumstances of finance and COVID impact the permitting and construction time timeline that they discussed. That, that to me, it seems fixed either way. And so I'd love for other board members, as you guys consider this, to, to think through that, because that, that, that doesn't seem right. And this has yeah, I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
So to follow on to George's questions, he brings up interesting, interesting points. And I, I should have asked staff this during the time, but I'll, I'll, I'll go ahead and take a little liberty and ask them now. If they came in tomorrow and dropped all of their applications for permits on your desk at one time, what would the lead time be to fulfill the permitting process?
Twenty buildings. It's really tough to say. I mean, six months.
And, and you have requested that they phase their permitting requests.
Yeah, we, yeah, try to group them in, you know, chunks that make sense, that are intuitive.
Okay. Is your staffing level, you know, we, 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 the community made lots of accommodation for staff. And I'm not saying this in any accusational way. I'm just saying, you know, gee, staffing for all city departments during the pandemic took a hit and we struggled with staffing levels. And we were struggling a little bit before the pandemic, but we're struggling certainly during and, and post-pandemic. Is, is your current staffing level affecting lead times for granting building permits?
At this point, on our building services side, we're, for the most part, fully staffed. We have some new staff that are still getting up to speed. So I think that's impacting us a bit, but our runtimes have improved. I would say with additional staffing and outsourcing some of our reviews as well. You know, that six-month timeframe, I would qualify that a bit. I mean, really the speed in which you advance through the process really depends on the quality of your initial submittal. So, you know, how well all the subs are aligned, the quality of the plans, you know, there's definitely some qualitative things that, you know, factor into speed. But how quickly you can get to the top of our pile, I think is probably one of the biggest obstacles. But to answer your question, we are almost fully staffed at this point. And I think our runtimes have improved.
Okay. My only other comment is, yeah, I, it seems like the applicant is certainly moving along and demonstrating diligence in their, in their processes.
Thank you. So I'm going to answer the question, has the applicant demonstrated reasonable diligence? And I agree with the staff analysis on page ninety-three of the memo. They've listed, you know, five technical documents, including the preliminary plat that have been submitted. And so they, the applicant clearly wants this project to happen. They're making progress towards it. They're investing in it. So I would say, yes, they have demonstrated reasonable diligence. May I ask Dalton to ask one quick question of staff? So I know that there has not been an example like this where the applicant has requested their three-year extension prior to exercising those two six-month extensions that are granted. But is it unprecedented, or has it been done before, that an applicant has had their three-year window, has had two six-month staff extensions, and has been granted a three-year extension on top of that? Is that unprecedented, or has that happened before?
So completion of the two-six-month administrative plus an additional three years? Yes.
It has happened before.
Yeah, and I think that's the, what the intent behind the code is, to, is to support ostensibly one year of administrative staff level approvals. And I think the way that we've interpreted is an additional three years.
Okay, just, I just wanted to clarify that, because it sounded like there might have been an impression that this has never been done before and we're bending over backwards for this developer. It seems like the only thing that is different is that they applied early for their three years.
Right, I think the only thing that we haven't done before is applied the extension date to the end of an administrative approval that has yet to expire.
Right, they basically just applied early in anticipation that they're not going to be able to get it done and wanting to reassure their lender. But they have reason to believe they won't be able to get it done and that they will need that three-year extension.
But I think our code, the construct of our code supports that one year plus an additional three years.
That would probably be my interpretation too, if we agree as a board that these criteria are met. Thank you.
I don't find any problems with the criteria number A. I believe that they have demonstrated reasonable diligence in getting to projects. So they've been at this for two years. And I think that they have exercised the diligence to use those two years. So, yes.
And I agree with my colleagues. I think that the criteria for A have been met.
All right, I think we're hearing that criteria for A have been met. Let's move on to B. So this is criteria for demonstrating good cause. So an applicant may show good cause as to why an extension should be granted by providing evidence that includes, without limitation, the following demonstration of the applicant's ability to complete the project within the extension. The extension is needed because of the size of the project or facing of the development or economic cycles or market conditions prevented the construction of the project during the original approval period. Largely, what I think I heard was the third. We'll go through again. Georgie, you're going to be last and we'll start over here.
Thanks, and I think that this has also been met. And I think that Georgie's objection really applies more to, or his concern maybe applies more to the second one. And I'd like to hear more from him at the end, but certainly these have been on, almost unprecedented since the Spanish flu, as you pointed out, almost unprecedented times. And yeah, interest rates go up and down and so on, but this is, this is truly a, an unusual time with with novel challenges for development. And I think if it were just this one developer, then we could potentially say, oh, you know, it's mismanagement on their part or something. But what I'm hearing from staff is that this is a common problem that we're going to have to deal with quite a bit as that this is a common problem that we're going to have to deal with quite a bit as times go forward. And so I think that, that pretty clearly B is also met.
So I think that the part of B that I wonder about, which I think is also what maybe George was talking about, was demonstrating the applicant's ability to complete the project within the extension. So I'm hearing, or maybe I'm understanding, some conflicting information about does a three-year extension as staff has proposed work or not? Good cause? I think the dip, the question in my mind is, the applicant is asking for 2028, and the staff is proposing 2026. And I think that that sort of gap is the ask, the applicant is asking for, I don't, I don't know that I agree that there is good cause to grant the 2028 extension. But I do see them substantiating the need for the three years. So did I give you a straight, a straightforward enough answer there?
So I would say that, yes, the applicant has demonstrated good cause primarily for that last condition there. Economic cycles and market conditions prevented the construction of the project during the original approval period. That is the good cause for why they need the extension. I will point out that this sentence is an or, it is not an and. All three conditions do not have to be met. Just one of them is sufficient. And I think that that last one is clearly met, you know, as has been described. They are not alone in the challenges that have been faced during COVID. So I think that they have demonstrated good cause. And it seems to me that staff have discussed that the intention in the code was to grant a year of administrative extension plus three years of board extension, if that is the board's desire, if we see that that is justified. So I would not have a problem with doing that.
I concur, especially on the economic cycles and market conditions. I think that post-pandemic, during pandemic and post-pandemic, rain, everyone from an individual to a family, to small businesses, to large businesses, all have been roiled by economic cycles and market conditions that they're not, it's not that they're unprecedented, or we've never seen them before, but they are, we're certainly coming off of a long period of economic stability. And this is a period of high volatility. And you know, I listen to a lot of economics news and you know, a lot of economists can't quite figure out exactly where the economy is going, what this economic cycle means. So anyway, it's a lot of volatility right now. So I certainly think they've demonstrated, and it's apparent to everyone that we're going through strange economic cycles.
All right, Georgie.
Yeah, I generally agree with the board's consensus there. Certainly, we're experiencing some, some strange economic cycles. I, like ML, I think a three-year extension that we grant on top of the one-year staff administrative, I don't, I don't see necessarily an issue with that. I think I understand, as I understand, I'm trying to understand the timing of everything. That brings us through November of 2027. I, I, I would be concerned about, you know, doing anything beyond that, only because we are in strange economic cycle times and you know, what we don't want as boulders to put entitlements out there and then have them languish unnecessarily. And the applicant has at their disposal a tool to phase this project administratively to fit within substantial completion well within three years based on the initial permitting and then the initial phases of the project, which, which, you know, by their own determination would happen somewhere nine months to a year after permits are approved. And so I don't know if there's anything more to be done here, but what I'd hate to do, hate to see is we approve an extension and then, for one reason or another, economic cycles, yada, yada, dirt doesn't get moved at all. And then they're back a few years later requesting another extension when, if they had phased the project, they would have, you know, had a little bit more ability or more of a, more of a a hammer to actually get those things done, and less of an excuse for, for things dragging on beyond that. But in general, I, I agree that this criteria is demonstrated for good cause. It just, I'm a little confused why the applicant hasn't looked at phasing to accommodate the timelines that Boulder has put in front of them. But maybe staff can clarify that. Maybe I don't understand fully the process, maybe it's own risk, but at some point outside of this, it'd be interesting to get, get an explanation from staff, the different alternatives around phasing that were available to the applicant. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I would say also that B has been met for before us, specifically to economic cycles. And again, you know, if this were the only applicant coming forward, then that wouldn't be true, but we're seeing, or perhaps wouldn't be true. But we are seeing a whole lot of these coming up. And we've all seen what happened over the past few years. Well, let's go ahead and move to C, and then I probably will have a couple of questions for staff just around timing. Let me look. Actually, let me ask that question now. So we're hearing a lot of numbers. We're hearing 26, we're hearing 27, we're hearing 28. So if the board were to approve for three years from tonight, which is one option, as I understand it, that would be November of 26, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And then is there any proposed date that would fall in 27?
No.
Okay. That's what I thought, too. I just wanted to share.
That we've been talking about is, I think, what it is that the applicant has requested of the board, and that's that consideration of three years from the expiration of the second administrative six-month extension that has yet to expire.
Okay, which would be when?
It expires on July 27, 2025, which would put their approval out to July 27 of 2028.
Okay. Thank you. So we're talking about early November of 26 or July, end of July of 2020, under the things that we have discussed. Thank you for that clarification. Okay. Anything further on criteria B? Right. Moving on to C, additional conditions. As part of a hearing to consider an extension, the planning board may impose additional conditions on the applicant in order to ensure compliance with any amendments to Title IX Land Use Regulation BRC 1991 enacted after the date of the original approval. What I believe I remember staff saying in the presentation, the packet, is that in staff's belief, no such conditions apply. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Does anyone in planning board, we can go through the line, but does anyone in planning board wish to speak to C? Okay. And I can't see Georgie's hand, but just yell at me, Georgie. Okay. Okay. So those are the review criteria. So according to that, I would say that planning board would find that this has met the review criteria. And so what I think is now before us is this question of when this three-year extension will count from and therefore also count to. And that is kind of what is before us. Yes, go ahead, Laura.
I would be happy to go ahead and make a motion and see what the board thinks. And I would ask staff, if you could please draft for us a motion changing the, you provided motion language for us on page 94 of the packet that talks about three years from the date of the decision. If that could be revised to reflect three years from extending the staff extensions that we talked about.
And I would be fine with you making such a motion, Laura. I'd also say that I probably am not ready to vote positively on it.
I would love to make the motion, see if there's a second and have discussion, and then, you know, see how we go.
So I had drafted motion language that effect in Senate to Amanda and staff. But if you want them to draft, anyway, it's up to you, but I
I would love to have staff look at what you've drafted and then give us what staff thinks is appropriate. If this is going to be something, language that we might need to reuse in the future, I want to make sure staff is comfortable with it. And they did seem to think that there was a pathway and that that was the intention of code to add three years on to the existing approvals.
And once, once that's ready to view, we'd love to see it up on the screen, but we'll wait for you to be ready to put it up for us.
Yeah, and just
Yes, thank you.
Just to let, man, sorry, my microphone's not very loud. Just to let Georgie know online that I'm going to have to stop screen sharing, but I can drop it in, in his chat on Zoom. But I can share with you all here in person. Kurt, go ahead.
Thanks. It seems to me that we could adopt a consistent interpretation saying that the extension applies, the three-year extension applies from the end of the second, the expiration of the second six-month administrative extension or the date of approval by planning board, whichever comes later. And that then would be consistent with the situation here and it sounds like the situation that we dealt with, that was dealt with before.
I, I agree with you, Kurt. I think that's probably not something we need to do as a planning board tonight, but that that might be something staff would do in the update to this that they're going to be bringing forward in a few months. But I think that your proposal makes sense from what I have heard.
And I think the interesting question there will be, and I think we'll be talking about this in more depth once we get some language up, is that, because, you know, I would want that to apply consistently, right? If we set such a rule and is such a long term of approval something that we want to be applying consistently? You know, like, in this case, we're seeing it come forward. Perhaps we will, perhaps we won't decide that that makes sense here. Whatever we do decide needs to be applied consistently and fairly. That's a really long time to let someone develop or not develop. And we'll get into it in more depth, but, you know, this was originally approved in 2021. That would basically be an automatic extension for seven years after an initial approval. I have concerns. Yeah.
I don't think it would be an automatic. I think it would be, it would have to meet the criteria first for the staff extensions, and then for planning board to grant the three-year extension, which seems to be what the code anticipated. So I don't think that it's doing anything new. I think it's just cleaning up how we apply it, because the circumstances under which they tried to do it earlier were different, where the approval had already expired. And they didn't want to backdate it and have them lose part of that three-year extension. And so in this case, we're just, they're just applying a little bit early, saying, we know we're not going to hit this date. Our funder knows we're not going to hit this date. We can't get funding. The project dies without funding. So we want to apply for that extension early, but they still need to meet those criteria of extenuating circumstances, having good cause, and having due diligence.
Yeah, seven years is a lot. You know, and I'm not sure how hard it is to meet those criteria. Anyway, I'm just raising that that's something I'll, I'll be wanting to go into more depth. I think we've got some motion language up, and Laura, you were interested in potentially introducing it and looking for a second, so please do so if you would like.
Thank you, Chair. I move to approve an extension to site review and use review case number LUR 2020-00063 for a period not to exceed three years from the date of the decision on the request. Incorporate, oh. Is that what we needed to say? The date on the decision of the request? That looks like the old language.
Language.
Okay, strike that. I don't move this. Let's wait for the new language.
I could suggest some language and just read it in the record. If you're comfortable with that versus having it on the screen.
I think we probably need it on the screen.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
It's on its way.
Hey, while we're, while we're waiting for this, can I ask Charles a quick question? Charles, can you, can you briefly, you know, explain the phasing tool that's at the developer's disposal? Because I'm still confused that if they, if it takes the nine months to permit and another nine months to a year to build the, to build conceptually, what could be the first phase? What's stopping them from doing that so that we could just meet a three-year timeframe and that they'd have over a year of buffer for substantial completion of the first phase?
Well, the phasing plan, you know, anything other than our standard three years to get to substantial completion would have need to be negotiated through the site review process. In this case, there was no phasing plan proposed. The applicant just moved forward with the standard three-year to get to substantial completion arrangement that exists in our code. It's not uncommon, as you guys know, where we see phasing plans that, you know, maybe break things into two, three-year phases. You know, which we've seen in the fast, in the past. And, you know, there are times where we have very specific language about when those phases start and stop, or you know, that they have to be consecutive. So that didn't occur through this site review process. George, so they would, they would ostensibly have to, you know, have, have met that substantial completion within three years. Then you have that little section of the code that gives you a couple six-month extensions. So that's where those come into the conversation. So does that, does that answer the question?
Yeah, that, that's, that's super helpful. I mean, I guess my, my only, my only concern in general for that, you know, going forward is if we've got, we've got a project that a developer thinks is going to take them nine months to a year to permit, and then 27 months to build. It sounds like it was approved to a certain extent, knowing that we were going to need some sort of extension based on, based on just how something like this could be built out. Is that, is that right?
Yeah, that's probably a better question for the applicant.
Okay. That's fine. We can cover it at a later time. You answered my question. That's, that's very helpful to understand sort of where that fits in the process. Thank you.
In the meantime, ML's going to ask a question.
Charles, can you clarify, I think you said that it's pretty common for applicants to get two-six-month extensions and then a three-year? So that puts us at a So that puts us at a, um, seven-year timeframe for a project. Is that, is that, but I understand you to say that that was, uh, common?
I wouldn't say it's common at this point. We've brought those requests to you in the past. Uh, we've brought a handful of them, um, in the last couple of years. Our concern is that we're starting to see more of them, I think, based on the current financial environment. So that's why we've been suggesting some code changes.
And I don't want to put you too much on the spot, Charles. We're getting some echo here. If anyone has their mic open, turn it off. Are you ready to share, able to share what those code changes might be or like what timeframes you're looking at?
Um, we're looking to advance a package of we, what we consider cleanup code changes, um, by the end of quarter one of next year. Uh, but we haven't synthesized what the text would look like or again, what the regulatory construct would be.
Okay, thank you. I was just curious.
Screen is frozen, so I don't know.
We are going to take a five-minute break. And we're gonna restart a computer and be back very shortly, hopefully.
Sorry, guys. I just can't even escape out of this. Well, I. Just, um, like, I'm just like frozen. I see my screen is just.
Oh, thank you. All right, we're gonna re-adjourn in about a minute. So if you're wondering or chatting, you have less than sixty seconds. And I'll take this thirty seconds to say again, thank you all, um, for public comment and much of what you said without speaking to this, um, project specifically. And our constitutional role, but many of the things you brought forward are things that we talk about a lot too and, um, hold very dear. So, thank you. All right, we are reconvening. Uh, and we now have some motion language up. Um, I think Laura, the floor was yours.
Thank you, Lisa. I move to approve an extension to site review and use review case number L U R twenty twenty zero 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 six-three for a period of three years from the end date of the most recently granted administrative extension incorporating the staff memorandum as findings of fact. I'd be happy to speak to this if there is a second.
There's a second, a second.
Seconded by Mark McIntyre and moving to discussion.
So I, I'm making this motion because it seems. I'm making this motion in order to be consistent with code and consistent with precedent. It sounds like this is what the code intended, is that if there are extenuating circumstances, if there is good cause and the applicant shows reasonable diligence, that they can get these extensions. They can first get the two-six-month staff extensions and then they can get a three-year extension from planning board. Those are the provisions that we have at our disposal. I'm not sure that there's anything else we could do tonight that would be consistent with code and would grant an extension as the applicant has requested, um, from planning board. Maybe I'm not seeing the options, but this seems like the thing that we could do that is consistent with both code and precedent.
Would anyone else like to speak to this?
No, I concur.
Georgie?
Are you, are you, you asked me to vote?
No, no, sorry, sorry, Georgie. Um, I was, discussion is still open, vote will be probably shortly. Just want to make sure you have the opportunity to speak.
Uh, no, the, the only thing I wanted to mention was kind of to echo what you said, Lisa, which is, I really appreciate the community coming out, irrespective of this vote around, uh, the, um, the extension. I think, uh, as planning board, we'll need to follow, you could, to, to Laura's point, what the code has intended related to what we have in front of us tonight. But I wanted the, the people that spoke know that, that, that I and we heard their voices and concerns and certainly take that into consideration on future projects. Uh, so I just wanted to put that out.
Thank you. All right, uh, no further discussion. Um, I will go ahead and call the vote, uh, starting with Kurt.
Yes.
I.
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 Yes.
And yes.
All right, passes unanimously.
Lisa, can I make a comment as well?
You may.
I want to support also what you and George said and that the members of the community, we do hear you and we are also concerned with things like the Gun Barrel Sub-Community Plan, your, um, available parks, how people in the area have access to services, neighborhood-serving businesses, um, the vacancies in your neighborhood. We are very much concerned with those things. We just have to follow the code that's in front of us for the application that's in front of us. So thank you so much for coming out tonight, making sure we understand those things. We really do appreciate your civic participation and thank you for being here tonight.
Lisa.
Yeah, go ahead, Mark.
Just real quick, um, and I would encourage the applicant to use best construction practices in regard to site maintenance, uh, fencing, et cetera. I'm not directing you to do anything. I'm just urging you to use absolute best practices, uh, as you develop the site in, in, um, in all of your construction things to minimize, uh, disturbances to the neighbors. Thanks.
Yeah, go ahead, Emma.
Yes, I would like to, um, also concur with, thank you, members of the public that we see and that we don't see, um, for speaking up. Those are the kind of comments that will make the most sense at the actual use in site review. So should you be involved in a future project? That is where your voices will have the most power because that's where we have the most opportunity to, um, to affect the kind of outcomes that we're looking for. And I would also agree with what Mark was saying. There seemed that the community engagement piece of the project, might have fallen through some cracks of the COVID and the whole disruption of process. And I think the project would be well-served if, um, some of those things could be attended to in a, in a, in a manner that, you know, become good neighbors before it's even built. Thank you so much, everybody.
And, um, I've been on the board long enough to remember that you were present at site and use review. So you, you have been very active from the get-go and I want to acknowledge that. All right, um, that, uh, wraps up, um, this public hearing item. Uh, we will now move forward with matters from the planning board, planning director and city attorney. Uh, I see one item, an informational item.
I'm sorry, I was having a sidebar conversation.
You're all good, Charles. Um, I, I, I was wrapping up the public hearing item and moving to matters and looking at item A. I'm not sure who might be speaking.
Oh, item A. Um, so I, I apologize. Um, that's simply an informational item for a lot line elimination. Um, it's kind of a technicality in our code. Um, we're required to transmit these to the board just for informational purposes. There's not a lot of magic to this. They're just dissolving some, um, existing lot lines, I think, that have, um, been there before we were stopped allowing buildings to spam lot lines.
We have a question?
Yeah, it just seems very strange that there's this requirement that this be communicated to us when we have absolutely zero to do with it. Do, is, do you have any history for why this is required?
Yes.
It's in the charter.
In the charter. So if you can get it on the ballot and get people to vote for it, then. Yeah.
I'll vote for it, Kurt, if you get it on there.
It goes back to a time though, uh, when there was a lot of concern about bad subdivision design. Do we have some other things in our charter that kind of allude to that as well? So I think it's a vestige, but it's in the charter, so.
All right, thank you. Uh, any other matters from, uh, planning director, city attorney, staff in general? I, I see you up.
Yeah, I have an item and we discussed it briefly at the, at the agenda meeting. It looks like both Lisa and Sarah would be absent at the next meeting on, is it November twenty?
Tuesday, the twenty-first.
Okay, yeah. So if both the chair and vice chair are absent at that meeting, board, um, has to elect an acting chair for that meeting. It is not that meeting yet, but whoever might take on that task might want to know ahead of time to be able to prepare. So, um, we thought that it might be a good idea for you guys to discuss who might want to take on that task and see if there's support from the rest of the board.
And, and you will need to attend a meeting at one P M. on the Monday prior. That's the agenda meeting.
That's right. Good reminder.
So I, I guess I'll first say, and I know that Amanda's been very on top of this, um, but I, it sounds like we will have quorum. Is there anyone else who knows that they will be out Tuesday, the twenty-first, Tuesday before Thanksgiving? Okay, so we'll, looks like we'll have a quorum. Uh, is anyone interested in nominating them? You're not really from the nominee yourself because you'll need to be elected, able to be selected in the meeting. However, we want you to know that you might need to attend agenda meeting and that you're going to have to run a meeting. Is there anyone who's super excited about this or wants to volunteer someone else to do it?
Well, I would say Mark did a good job last time we were in this situation.
He can hardly contain his excitement.
Mark, will you be volunteered? Can you, can you, uh, accept, would you accept that?
I would accept the nomination.
I nominate Mark.
Great. And, uh, Mark, would you be able to attend a, uh, an agenda meeting at one P M. on Monday, the twentieth? It might be possible to shift it around a little bit if not, but it looks fine. Ah, you have been voluntold. Thank you, Mark.
This is why you shouldn't do a good job in the first place.
Thank you. Uh, and planning director?
Well, other than looking forward to Mark's extensive, uh, campaign materials leading up to the vote, the twenty-first, I, I don't have much to add other than to congratulate you all for your first, uh, hybrid meeting in however, forever long. Uh, a big thank you to staff for getting this all lined up.
Sorry for a few hiccups.
Amanda's, uh, not only this board, but also landmarks and our others. So she's had a lot going on, especially with, uh, Devin having moved on. So thank you to her and to everybody for your flexibility and successful meeting. Thank you.
Uh, and then the last thing I'll say again, Amanda's been super on top of it. Um, just looking out ahead, um, uh, as we look at future meetings. And I know I already sent an email about it, um, but just week before Christmas, let us know if you know you won't be available, uh, or on the second, um, the day after New Year's. Just like, keep us appraised. Looks like we're probably gonna have quorum. It'd be nice to know if we won't for any particular meeting.
Yeah, we have items actively like being scheduled for those meetings. Actually, we have items already scheduled for those meetings. So it would be important for us to know if we don't have a quorum.
And I, I'm going to try to make at least one of them, but probably will not be able to make both of those two dates just due to holidays. All right, anything from the board? Yes, Mark?
I, I took note and I, I, again, this is not a, a criticism. I just want to say I, uh, was discussing with, uh, a council member, uh, a prior meeting and anyway, the topic is kind of irrelevant. But, um, uh, I, they asked me some questions about the results of motions and votes in one of our meetings and I went back and I said, well, I, I, you know, I forget things as soon as the meeting's over. It's like, I worried about them and now, you know, it's done. So I said, I'll go back and look at the minutes. And so, um, I could not find the minutes for August fifteenth meeting. And I think we have done minutes subsequent to that. So anyway, I, I don't think we have minutes for, uh, August fifteenth, which was the, um, the big, we had a big, uh, topic, uh, which included the, um, Hill, uh, restaurant use and, yeah. So anyway, um, that was, uh, that was interesting. And, and then when I couldn't find the minutes, I went and watched the video to refresh myself and was able to answer their questions. But during that discussion, uh, they also said that, well, you're not the only board struggling with minutes. And now that Devin's gone and everything else, I'm not asking that minutes come fast and furious. But, um, anyway, it was interesting that we, we were missing minutes from that meeting.
Do you have any insights and, uh,
Um.
That might. And we can get back to you.
Yeah.
Have to put you on this.
Yeah, I'm. I'm sorry to hear that. I don't know about the fifteenth. I'm looking at a set here.
And maybe I just couldn't find them. It, it certainly could be me, but, um.
No, I, I, well, I'll double check our central records online. That's where you are working, looking, I'm assuming.
Yeah.
For them.
But why don't we just commit to getting back to you about that?
Yeah.
Thanks for.
Follow up on it.
And one last thing, you know, A I has been a topic of, for. And one last thing, you know, AI has been a topic of, for all of us recently and, um, it was suggested by one of the council members, well, you know, this might be an actual productive use for something like AI to have it go through the transcript, produce minutes and then have a human kind of do a little bit of editing. It's like, wow, what a thought to, uh, you know, rather than doing evil.
Yeah, I do know the IT, I do know the IT department is interested in delving into AI next year, so.
Those would be hundred, hundreds of pages. Cause we are a verbose bunch.
Right, but if you, if you, if your request was, you know, condense this down to meaningful, you know, with a, with a 2,000-word count, you know, it's like, you know.
I, I'd enjoy seeing what it came up with anyway, and you, you could potentially train it to do a better job. Thank you. Thank you for bringing up the missing minutes.
Right.
It'd be like, here are your votes. You're done. Uh, you may.
I have a question for staff. So the boards and commissions report that the consultants was hired. They did a bunch of interviews. They did a survey. And there's a report that I think is going to city council. Is it this week?
Yeah, this week on Thursday. So that report's available as part of the, uh, packet for council.
I read it. I thought it was very interesting. I didn't see a whole lot that looked super relevant for planning board. Of course, there, I think there are things that will change about the recruitment process to try to make it more diverse and accessible. Uh, there was a, a note in there about trying to perhaps shorten the terms so that people aren't committed for quite so long. So there was a suggestion to have planning board members be a three-year term instead of a five-year term. Were there any other what you thought were significant recommendations that might impact planning board that I might have missed?
You know, we reviewed that as part of the management team for the department and, and flagged a few. Not sure I'd want to do that on the fly, but we can certainly share that out with you next time about some of our thoughts about that. I think we were going to have a subsequent conversation anyway, weren't we, about that?
Those are the standouts though, at least in, in my mind. You know, then there's just the mechanics of, you know, how you serve the board or the memos too long, you know, what's the homework like? How are you stacking agendas, those kinds of things? But the, the ones that you have identified were the ones I think that resonated with our group.
I think we added training too.
Yeah, yeah, training and training materials. It's standardizing some of that, um, across the, uh, the organization and not just the boards that exist out of P and D S.
And, and there were some suggestions too, to potentially eliminate or condense some of the boards, but if, but planning board was not on that list, as I recall.
Think we can be confident that's
We'll be here every Tuesday nights. Don't worry.
All right, all right. I, I did find it to be a very interesting report if people, uh, are interested in that.
All right, anything further from board or staff? This meeting is adjourned.
Thanks for sharing tonight, Lisa. I know you're still not feeling great.
No, no, you're fine. I'm just putting food away. It's all good. Yeah. No, it's not backed up, but, um, I, I couldn't get those sterno's to blow out. There's still fire back there.